All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Shelley Cowell from the Bethlehem Baptist Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Cowell?
Let us pray. Most heavenly kind and gracious Father, we thank you for all your mighty works. We thank you for your presence that's here with us in this room right now. Because you promised in your word that you would never leave us or forsake us. You said, "Lo, I'm with you always, even to the end of the world." We thank you for the city council meeting and for all the council members. I pray that you will guide our councilmen as they meet together to discuss the matters regarding our city. Give our councilmen wisdom as they deliberate on every item that is before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for our benefit, for our good, for our interests, and most of all, for your glory. Have your way, and as always, may you receive all the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free and public, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item on the agenda is Citizens Time. I'll call you up, and as always, you'll have three minutes. The first person we have signed up is Mr. Jerry Blavens.
This speech will be my last speech for the With County Board of Supervisors. On April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, I was kidnapped by Major Klein and Sheriff Charles W. Foster. The following story is in my own words as to what happened. Upon being kidnapped, I was taken to the Mount Rogers Mental Health Facility in Marion, Virginia. At this time, I was interviewed by a male and a female. I told them that I had stopped by the Mount Rogers Mental Health Clinic to get help from a trauma problem in Withville. The subject of my aggressive neighbor came up, and I asked a question. What can I do if I'm physically attacked by this neighbor killing? The interviewer then said, "Hmm, I don't know." I then proceeded to tell the interviewer that I certainly wasn't going to hurt anyone, and that I would take my problems of this sort to court. At the Marion, Virginia, Mount Rogers Clinic, they were very nice and informed me that Mount Rogers Mental Health Clinic was not behind my ECO, and it was strictly a police affair. I suspected this anyway, because if I had have made a physical attack against anyone, that would have been a criminal charge and not at ECO. The folks at Mount Rogers Mental Health Clinic then told me that police were then setting a future, which I came to find out some month later, a five-day TDO, temporary detention order, which was to be seven or eight days, which turned out to be ten days. Sheriff Foster had little choice, because earlier, on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, I was involved in a lawsuit with a lady who worked at the With County Department of Social Services. And Sheriff Foster was going to be called as the whip to set that trial. The sheriff who stayed interviewed with the Withville Enterprise said I had made derogatory remarks during a DAS interview. The problem here lies in the fact that no one at DAS was ever making that statement. So when Sheriff Foster was subpoenaed to the stand, he had no choice but to write an attorney to try and get suspended quashed. Even after losing the court case, I still have ten days to appeal, and Sheriff Foster could not allow me to do that. So in my opinion strictly, as Sheriff Foster designed my kidnapping to liberate to keep me in custody, so he would not have to testify. Also by doing this TDO, temporary detention order, he could get my guns, and he put on stringent proper drug cover, spirit of alcohol, probably kill me, and I stayed on it. This way, he was on my reputation, given my record of involuntary admission to a psychiatric hospital, and proved the whole world just how nefarious he is. My TDO was carried out in Valeredale psychiatric hospital in Marion, Virginia. I was released by Sturtevant. Now I'm in detox, doing a B hospital. A lot of pocket houses, all covered, it's good, nothing for sale. You can see from my experience this past year, the height, that I've come up from top to bottom, is paying no attention to the Constitution of Bill of Rights. We can see now that the country has no more place to give their lives than the other country in the world. Just as God had his son, Donatell, to make what is your creditable, he has me go through what I had to go through to make my words credible. My mortal friend hopes you get the message, because much of your experience. Thank you, and God bless. And to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blavens. Next person we have signed up is Ms. Linda Meyer. Ms. Meyer?
I'll pass, I just spoke to Mr. Fowler, and he's trying to answer some guys about the Lee's Road Bridge, so I don't need to ask you that question.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, next person we have signed up is Mr. David Midkiff.
I agree with Ms. Meyer, he's going to answer the question.
Okay. All right, that's all we have signed up for the normal Citizens Time, so I'll close Citizens Time. Our next item on the agenda is, the reason most of you are here, is we have our public hearing for the VDOT six-year plan. Do we need to read the notice, Mr. Barrett?
Uh, yes, sir.
Let me rephrase it.
Do I need to read the notice, Mr. Chairman? The Virginia Department of Transportation, the Board of Supervisors of With County, in accordance with section thirty-two point, thirty-three point two, three thirty-one of the Code of Virginia, will conduct a joint public hearing in the boardroom at the With County Administration Building, three forty South Sixth Street, Withville, Virginia, two four three eight two, at six oh five P M. on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-eight, twenty-nine, in With County on a secondary system construction budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Copies of proposed plan and budget may be reviewed at With residency office located at twenty-eight forty-three Chapman Road, Withville, Virginia, or at the With County offices. All projects in the secondary six-year plan that are eligible for federal funds will be included in the statewide transportation pro, improvement program, which documents how Virginia will obligate federal transportation funds. Persons requiring special assistance to attend or participate in this hearing should contact VDOT at two two eight twenty-one fifty-four. Persons wishing to speak at the public hearing should contact With County Board of Supervisors at two two three forty-five hundred.
All right, uh, Mr. Fowler, do you want to start, or you want to go straight into public comment?
Um, I could go ahead and start, but I'm going to answer.
Okay, that's fine.
So, um, start with this, put my stuff in order here. Okay, the two thousand and twenty-three allocation for the six-year plan this year is one million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, fifty-six dollars. This will allow three point two miles of roads to be added to the secondary six-year plan schedule, and that is three point two miles at three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars per mile. And basically, what we have to do is we have to break it down, the total allocation by three fifty-six, eight ninety-two per mile, and that's at a rate to finish the roads with plant mix. And all the roads will not be paved with plant mix, but what we're going to do is we're going to evaluate the plan as the roads come up for, um, of the plan for their completion. And basically, we determine the connections, that the road that we're going to finish, if on either side we have, like, on one side is a dirt road or surface treated road, or if the road that we're going to finish on the six-year plan is going to be highly traveled, then we'll recommend that those, that that route be finished with pavement versus the hardship. So, at three point two miles this year, we reviewed some routes. I worked with Stephen, and he worked with a few guys on routes that we wanted to review and select for this year's six-year plan. Uh, one of the routes, uh, three point two mile section of Johnny Lane, meets the criteria for a old rustic build, it has a daily traffic count of seventy, and that is from the end of pavement on the old stage road side. So from the end of pavement of Johnny Lane, from the old stage entrance to the bus turnaround, is three tenths of a mile, if that qualifies. Klein Road, uh, point six miles, eighty, uh, traffic count of eighty per day does qualify for six-year plan. Cinnamon Run, uh, one point three six miles, from the end of pavement at the intersection of Berea Road to Greasy Creek Road, does qualify. Trout Farm Road, uh, point nine, uh, nine tenths of a mile, does qualify. It has a hundred and ten vehicles per day. Wendy Hill Drive, point seven miles, it qualifies. It has a traffic count of two hundred and sixty per day. And then we reviewed Steelwell Road, it's one point seven miles, and it did not qualify for the old rustic build because of very steep slopes down to a creek, and then steep cut slopes on the other side of the road, which doesn't allow for us to widen the road enough to, under this, under the old rustic concept, it doesn't allow us to build that route. That's going to be a design project. So, I'm going to say that Johnny Lane, actually, we have some maintenance funding that has become available recently, and Johnny Lane qualified for us to do that in-house outside of the six-year plan. So we've been approved for funding to do Johnny Lane outside of the six-year plan. So we can take that, that length of route out of this plan, which actually allows us to add Klein Road. So the proposal is that we add Klein Road, Cinnamon Run, Trout Farm Road, and Wendy Hill Drive.
Does anybody have any questions on the six-year plan for Andy?
I don't.
Um, before we do the public comment, you want to talk about Lee's Road Bridge, just to knock that out?
Yeah, um, one of the questions that Ms. Meyer brought up was, I don't see any action in the field since we, since the resolution to start, to do the project as a, basically a reconstruction. And I know, in talking with the, uh, the bridge, district bridge engineer, that it has started, but you know, the boots aren't on the ground yet. So basically, they're ordering material, doing all the scheduling, planning, getting everything together to start. So the project technically has started, just don't see the people there yet. So it is on schedule for what we, what the resolution asks, and that was a sixteen-month build.
Then, we were discussing that earlier, and I was thinking that was, what was, do you remember, Jim, when it was? Is that what you're trying to figure? How long it was going to take?
Uh, was it the? I thought it was the sixteen months.
Sixteen months, too. So the process has begun, and, and then we've received some phone calls and some work orders on the detour. Um, and it has been reviewed by the local bridge superintendent, and he's, uh, he's submitted a detour plan to the bridge engineer for approval. It's been approved, and the, um, sign crew is working on getting everything together to set up the full detour. Any other questions on Lee's Road? That, that's, that's the, what I have.
I think by having...
When you all mapped it, or? Yeah. When you're fracturing, it's very difficult to construct. It's, yeah, because the project actually has begun, but it's...
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Fowler?
I just got one, this, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dan.
Go ahead.
No, I didn't have anything.
Okay. Uh, just a clarification, I know we've talked about Jones Road quite a bit off the Red Hollow Road in the Port Tussam District. I think it means the qualifications for old rustic, but we was talking about smart scale, is that correct, Mr. Barrett?
Smart scale would be the only option to apply for that road.
Okay, that's the one. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fowler, let everybody else speak, unless you have anything else. We might bring you back up.
All right, and as far as this, um, this list, you, I know you guys have the list.
We'll wait till we hear the comments from everyone.
Right, okay. So I'll, I'll wait, jump ahead, take the part for the horse.
Just based on the people that signed up, I'd say we're, we're good to go.
I hope not the podium over your clothes.
All right, I'll open the, the public here, or public comment section of the hearing. Uh, I'll call you up to the podium, since it is a, a public hearing, you will have five minutes. Um, I'll just go ahead and tell you that, uh, all those roads that were discussed, um, I don't think you're going to find anybody up here that's going to disagree with you. I think everybody up here's, um, or most of us have lived on a dirt road. Um, so we certainly feel your pain, but we do appreciate you coming out. Um, where's Ms. Dean at? Oh, so, uh, if, uh, anybody in With County lives on a dirt road, wants to get somebody's attention, y'all reach out to Ms. Dean.
If any of you all live on a dirt road.
Well, like I said, about all of us up here has lived on one at some point, so, all right, first person we'll call up is Mr. Chris Turpin. If you, you'll come up, so they, because they have to record. And folks, I'll just tell you, we give you five minutes. It, it don't, we agree with you, so, but you've got five minutes, so...
I just wanted to pick on behalf of persons on, on Wendy Hill Drive, you know, and just get the road paved, so, you know, control the, the dust down, and, uh, plus it's low speed and low traffic on that road, yeah. That's all I have, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turpin.
Thank you.
All right, next people signed up, Timmy or Kay, whichever one, that's, I figured she was going to make you.
Yes, I appreciate y'all hearing this out today. Um, back in two thousand and twenty-one, we requested a sign for the traffic trailers on the GPS, was, uh, send them down Wendy Hill Drive, and we appreciate y'all taking care of that, put a sign up, the GPS notification for the trucks. Um, we also have had a lot of, uh, right-of-way issues, um, with the sawmill, parking equipment in the road, tearing up the banks of the road, the ditch lines, uh, a lot of stuff like that, and I have some pictures if y'all would like me to pass them around with, I'll be glad to, Chairman. Just kind of give an example of what was going on. Um, we notified the sheriff's office on one account where a chip conveyor was put into our ditch line. We, uh, sheriff's office had already been with the sawmill, their owner, and, uh, that didn't, I mean, it got resolved, but not like, like we wanted to. Um, I believe I sent Mr. Fowler, Mr. Brown, Mr. Fowler an email on that, and I perhaps the copy of that email. Um, it's just the equipment in the road. I mean, you can't get around it, two vehicles can't pass on the backside of Wendy Hill most definitely. It drops down to less than a single lane road. And, uh, there's a lot of buses, and we've talked to Brad Haga, and he has offered to take care of that, but we still have one bus that actually speeds quite often in there. And, uh, I was under that pressure, and Mr. Francis Foster told us that we needed to talk to him about that, about the speeding and stuff, but, uh, we just want to appreciate y'all looking into it, and hopefully y'all can take care and resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dan Southers from Wendy Hill.
Thank you all for that speaking. We have lived on Wendy Hill Drive since nineteen seventy-eight. In the early eighties, VDOT came to our house and asked us if we would donate a partial of our land at the road for them to take, there was a bad hill there, to take the hill out of the road. We donated that land to them, and VDOT verbally told us at that time they would tar and gravel the road up to our driveway. Well, we're still living there now, and it's never been done, nothing's ever been done. And it's scary when that big school bus goes through there, and there's no, if you meet it, somebody's going to have to back it up, and it would probably be the school bus, because I came back. But anyway, that really needs to be looked into, and needs to be took care of, and we donated our land, and the right-of-way was put there, and then the sawmill comes in, and the sawmill's plum over in the road at times, and you can tell by the pictures that, uh, he passed out. But anyway, we thank you for listening to us, and hopefully something can be done at this time and era, having to live on a dirt road. And our granddaughter has asthma horribly, and the dust, and sometimes our houses are covered in dust. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all we have signed up for to speak about.
Dr. Spraker. Dr. Spraker. He's insurance team co.
Let me finish. Believe it or not, I know what I'm doing. That's all we have finished, or signed up to speak on Wendy Hill Drive. I just, can I get a show of hands for everybody that's here from Wendy Hill? All right. Well, I, I, it's funny, the reason I ask, I spoke to several of them on the phone, and, uh, they always accuse me of hiring actors when it's a road in my district, so I just wanted to make sure. All right, next person we have signed up is Dr. Michael Spraker. Trout Farm Road, which I will have to say is one of the dustyest roads in With County.
Well, thank you all. Uh, I appreciate it. I'm here on behalf of, uh, my neighbors as well, I've been volunteering to speak. Again, it's a short road, very short, uh, but it is traveled, uh, quite frequently. For those who don't know, there is a business located at the end of Trout Farm Road that brings in a lot of out-of-state, um, travelers as well. Uh, and depending on when you measure the traffic, it depends, uh, on when fishing season's open. So it is highly traveled. The other problem is, um, regarding the dust, we've asked VDOT to spray, but there's also, uh, Mr. Bloom, who has an organic farm there, has asked VDOT not to spray to keep the dust down that way. He sent, uh, possibly an email in, uh, regarding that, so I've talked to Dan Sundberger about that, um, and he said, you know, as long as he, uh, has the organic farm there, they can spray, probably does have signs up. Again, it's a short road, highly traveled, uh, we ask that you consider that as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Spraker. Uh, that's all we have signed up to speak for the public hearing part, so I will close that. Mr. Barrett, Mr. Fowler, do y'all have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, um, with Mr. Fowler's recommendation, uh, with the comments you've heard from the public, um, I do not think action needs to be taken, other than to just advise Mr. Fowler to go ahead and prepare the six-year plan with all the roads he discussed, and Johnny Lane will be taken care of with some other funds, you said, and we'll have that for your else adoption at the next meeting.
Does anybody have any problem with that or discussion? The only thing I would add is, I did get a request, um, Mr. Fowler, on crawfish between the two bridges. Um, you know, there's commercial farming out there, um, large trucks, large tractors. That's always been the worst part of that road, anyway. If, if you could look, I don't know if it would fall in the maintenance funding like you did for Johnny Lane, um, but if there was any way we could address that.
Between the two bridges, would it still be dirt on both sides of the bridges?
Yes.
Yeah. Don't make me call Roy Cox. Don't, don't make me call, I got, I got Roy Cox's number, don't make me call. I know, but, you know, Roy lived on a dirt section in between two pieces of paint. But, yeah, I mean, I know we looked at the traffic count, um, a few years ago, and, I mean, I was, I'll just say, I was absolutely shocked when I got the traffic count back from, for Wendy Hill. Um, that was, you know, everybody I talked to talked about how much traffic was on there, but I would have never guessed two hundred and sixty vehicles a day, so that's, um, if, if Trout Farm had two hundred and sixty vehicles a day, everybody living in a brown house.
It's white, brown now.
But, uh, no, besides that, I, I mean, I think it's a good list, and, and I think it's the first time since I've been on the board that the money allocated actually worked out with the mileage, so, um, I think we go for it, and probably never happen again, so, but, all right.
So at this point, we're, uh, I'll go back there, but, uh, so at this point, we're going to move toward resolutions for all those routes?
Put adding to the six-year plan and the resolutions for all those routes, and we'll adopt those at the next meeting, if that's acceptable.
You have Klein Road, Cinnamon Run, Trout Farm Road, and Wendy Hill Drive. And just a side note, with Wendy Hill being a connector route, it's kind of a shortcut, that's why the, the traffic count is high when we pave it.
I've, I've had that discussion as well.
And, but it will be posted at thirty-five once it's, once it's paved.
I was getting ready to ask if you'd go ahead and do a speed study once you...
Yeah. Automatically on rural rustic, as soon as it's painted, it should be posted at thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Does anybody have anything else from Mr. Fowler?
I've had some phone calls of, of dirt roads around Baron Springs, if, if he's spraying, whatever. I don't know what y'all spray, but I remember y'all do it sometimes. Don't know when that might be done, but I've just been getting phone calls.
I'll take this opportunity to pick on Dr. Spraker. My favorite story of Dr. Sprakers out there is the Hiltons always were very nice, and let a lot of the Little League football teams have their banquets at their shelter out there, and a little third or fourth grader came through, and Dr. Spraker was building his house up there, and it's a wooden log structure with sort of an A-frame look to it, and some little fourth grade kid was all excited, didn't know they were getting a Bass Pro shot up on Trout Farm Road, so, uh...
Of course, you know, Dr. Spraker, you really hate living on that dirt road. I've got a house for sale on the Faraway Creek.
Um, I actually, I live in Dr. Spraker's former home, so, but, uh, uh, Mr. Fowler, before I let you go, uh, I understand that you may be retiring, so...
Retiring July.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. In case we don't see you before then, I, I just want to say thank you for your communication, you know, ever since you've had that position, and, and I know I get frustrated with the red tape that's involved coming from Richmond. I won't say that you probably do, too, but, um, but every time that I personally have reached out to you with road concerns, you've been really great about getting back forward. Um, you've done a great job for us since you've been in that position, and, uh, I hate to see you go, but I wish you the best, and, so, it, uh, I can't say it a blanket.
Amazing how fast thirty years.
You can still come to our meetings, just if you get real bored.
If you get a pothole or something, just tolerate.
Mr. Chairman, if, if you don't mind, while they're here, while he's up there, under new business, we do have Lake Road with a resolution. Do you want to have them wait, or do you want to go ahead and take care of that and get it out of the way?
Uh, we'll go ahead and take care of that. We'll go ahead and take care of that, and before we move on, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for the six-year plan. For everybody that's here that wanted to talk about the six-year plan, basically what that means is, the roads that we talked about at our next meeting, we're gonna pass a resolution, they've been approved, we're gonna put them on the six-year plan. And the reason I say that, you're more than welcome to stay, but most people like a little heads up when they can leave. So if you don't want to stay, now's the time to take off. I do appreciate everybody coming out, and like I said, all the roads that we talked about, we're very familiar with, and we're excited to get them on the plan and get them hard surface, so thank y'all.
Thank you all.
Except for you, Dr. Spraker.
Glad I could have a little conversation. I'll say you'll probably never come back to our meeting.
All right, Mr. Fowler, you want to talk about, or Mr. Barr, you want to talk about Lake Road?
Basically, page 58 of your agenda, Mr. Williams has been working with me on this, Ms. Heath had started in the past, and anybody. Basically, my easiest way to explain it is, no offense to V-Dot, I don't think V-Dot has in their records where the old road through Royal Retreat Lake was ever abandoned in the sixties or whatever it was when the new road was put in there. So basically, this resolution is to basically do all the things that you see on this chart here, and that's to vacate the blue section of the road that runs through the middle of the lake, add the new Royal Retreat Lake Road to 677 that has been the lake road that we've all known the entire time. And it does look at adding the two little sections that were the old part of the road that people still live off of. It leaves them as V-Dot maintained roads, if I am correct, with the adoption of this resolution.
On the 977?
Yes. It's, that they'll renumber, yes. I will point out, on the very northern end of the 977, you will see that the green line runs there, but you'll actually see to the left of it, the actual road is not where the green line is. The green line is actually the old state-maintained road. When the new road was put in, that road basically ends about 10 or 15 feet above the grade of Lake Road. We are trying to work with whatever DGIF's name is now, DWR, to get them to dedicate that right-of-way where the road is to us, so we can dedicate that to V-Dot to get that reallocated or whatever it needs to be within their system.
All right, Mr. Fowler, do you have anything to add?
No, and V-Dot supports this resolution.
All right, I open the floor up for a motion to approve 2023-15, West County Resolution.
But that's the only road we hadn't had a complaint on in 2023.
No gas complaints.
Second.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Horny. Is there any questions or discussion?
I will admit, the last time I saw that road, it's on our 2002 aerial photography, the drought was so bad, it actually was low enough that you could see that road all the way.
I remember seeing it.
Yeah.
All right, any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. We have anything else for Mr. Fowler?
No, sir.
Anything for Mr. Fowler?
Any issues? Good?
Thank you. Pars on that?
Thank you. Thanks for everything.
All right, we'll get back on our agenda. We have our payment of invoices each board member has received in their board package, copy of the invoices that we need to approve. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices. So have a motion by Mr. Cook, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any question, discussion, or any invoice any board member wants to pull out? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is the minutes from our previous meeting from April 25, 2023. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So move, have a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Aye.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on to old business, our first item is a Point Broadband update. Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We do have a couple of folks here from Point Broadband to talk about how progress is going on the expansion of broadband, and I'll let them introduce themselves and give you some good news.
I'll go first. My name is Tony Carter. I'm the new general manager for Point Broadband, so I've only been in the area a little over nine days. Just to let you know, I come from western North Carolina, around Asheville, rural counties around Asheville, similar to a lot like Wood County, the build, the ride out, everything is similar to that. And when the position came up in here, and seeing what the partnership with the counties, the state, and Point Broadband, and the amount of homes that build that's gonna be on for broadband, I wanted to be part of it, because it's basically, anybody in my position, seeing the numbers that we put down, it's pretty phenomenal for such a rural community, so we're excited about that. Today, Randy and I got to drive out to West County, it's beautiful. We went all the way up, all over, all over the county. So it was a very beautiful landscape, a lot of stuff we see, you know, Randy was showing me is where fiber's been built, and we're waiting on it, we were waiting on a few obstacles to stop, that were stopping that, you know, build to continue, with fiber hooked up on the poles and different things, you all probably have seen that around the county like that. The bad thing about those delays, it stops you from, you know, from continuing on and cleaning that up and finishing the broadband expansion. The good thing is, once those delays get cleared, since that's already built, we can go ahead and activate a lot sooner. If we hadn't gone on and built some of those areas, waiting on those permit issues and the different things Randy laid out, we'd be a year further down our schedule than the dates he's gonna give you. So I won't take any of Randy's thunder, I'll let Randy Ham, our construction manager, give you the good updates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Teach you how to do that. Nice to see everybody, appreciate you giving us the opportunity to come back up, and I'm hoping you're anticipating some better news than I had last time. I can see with a smile, you are. So just a brief update, we won't take a lot of your time. Obviously, if there's any questions after we leave tonight, you know, feel free, Matt has a, we have good communication back and forth as well. Last time we were here, we were talking about the backbone down the Speedway, which will serve the Body 1 portion of that grant. So I can safely tell you right now, we're in the final stages of splicing. I-81 crossing, both the underground sections, they had to be added, even the broken pole, they had to be helicoptered in. Those are fixed, they're done. We completed the railroad crossing at 20th and Railroad Avenue yesterday, so it's into the splicing now. So that tells us that everything from Nye Road Pop all the way to Speedway is in the air, it's in splicing, we should have that done within the next probably 10 to 15 days, which will allow us to turn up three of the last eight cabins for that section by July. And honestly, secretly, I'll say secretly, we're being recorded, but I'm hoping before July. But right now, it's forecasted for July. I got to give out kudos to another person with V-Dot, Mike Phipps. He's been a crucial, vital partner in getting through the V-Dot process for permitting. You know, there are some right-of-ways that, you know, V-Dot has some of the folks that actually own the land, own to the center of the road. So there has been a few of those, we're through that process and then air, so that's some good news there as well. Any USDA areas that are involved, you know, where the builds are, not only for Body 21, but the Body 22 section, those are in USDA process as we speak. The last time, you know, I was here, knowing I was here, you know, that process hasn't begun yet. It has, so it's in the environmental study phase of that. And depending on the type of environmental study, 30 days, 45, 60, 90, you gotta know those timeframes, depending on what it impacts, what the impacts could be. Moving on to the Body 2022, we have begun process in five of the first eight that we intend to turn up by the end of the year. Working our way from I-81 north and south, just a little bit, from the Mountain Empire Airport, working to the east, trying to build that secure, redundant connection between the Whipple Pop and the Atkins Pop. We already had one, it's better to have two, that way if you have a failure on one side, it reverses over to the other and your service, you know, doesn't be impacted, so. Lot of ground, we're covering a lot of ground. Forecasting before the end of the year, we're hoping to have at least seven of those eight up and running by the end of the year. The first one should be released in the October timeframe. We're on schedule with all of that. Just to give you a little bit, can't remember exactly, last time I was here, what our run rate was per week, but right now, the volume that we're putting up in the air is around 600,000 linear feet per week. That's a lot. We have been very, very lucky to stay ahead of the material shortages that everybody else is seeing, that we know of throughout the state. We haven't seen those, and hopefully, we don't see any of those. We've got a pretty good plan, and our forecasting is out into next year, so that we can stay ahead of that material ordering process. That's about all I've got for an update today. You got any questions?
Anybody have any questions for?
So when you come and hook my internet up?
I build it, he hooks it up.
See you tomorrow.
So if there are some, if there are some questions, now that we're back up here and giving good news, I'm sure the folks and citizens in the county are gonna be watching this and anticipating some timeframe. You know, if and when you get those questions, emails, whatever, phone calls, you know, you guys know exactly how to reach us, and we can respond real quick, you can kind of go.
What's, and I guess this is more from the marketing standpoint, but I guess probably a year ago, when you started hooking people up on the far western end of the county next to Smith County line, like I'd see yard signs. Once, once y'all get everything running and it's ready to go, how does the, do y'all do what?
How's the consumer know it's for?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, one thing we've done, and what the company let me do is add the new position called Marketing Coordinator. And we're gonna start doing some mailings about two months before an area's ready, say, fiber coming soon, it's coming soon. What we also have is build up a marketing sales team. And so when we get an area, when Randy says, hey, this soon is gonna be ready, we'll actually send a door to ourselves, and we do an area and start knocking the doors, hand and fly, or say, hey, we're gonna be ready. We found that to be very effective, because we can sit down with the citizens, explain it to them what fiber is and all that type of services. We'll take an order, we'll put it in the system, and then when the area is ready to start installing, we'll call them and schedule it. And usually, we try to tunnel it to be only a week or so later, quicker too late on that. And then, right after that happens, and it's officially released, the marketing department will just do an blast email to all the addresses that we have. Now, lots of, a lot of reason we do the door and roll, is just because the fact that a lot of times you don't have roll addresses, you know, sometimes the mailing addresses don't match the data that we have. So we really rely on the door and roll to go out and knock.
A lot of these areas, I don't know if the email blast would work, because they don't have any internet.
Well, they do mail, well, mail blasts too, mail blasts too, yeah. They do mail too, they do direct mail. So we're gonna start, you know, sending mail to all the addresses we do have, you know, two months before it's gonna be ready, say it's coming soon, and then we'll go out with the team, a large team, and go out and start knocking the doors in the area. Then another marketing mail slash email will start hitting. And then they'll probably be part of the normal marketing process, every month, people are not customers in there, and we'll get them. So it may take a couple of times to do that, to get them to notice that.
Yeah, I just wondered.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's right. The new marketing coordinator, we're also going to, when we're in an area, like if we have multiple cabins in an area, we'll set up a sign. And that way means we'll find a very popular area, and we'll set up a tent, and some snacks and drinks, and just let them be here. A lot of times it's a Walmart or something like that.
Last Saturday in July, Heritage Days and Retreats.
Oh, okay.
You may go by the town office and talk to them.
Okay, yeah.
Be a really good place, if y'all would sit up and do.
Royal Retreats, definitely.
And then, and later on, which y'all probably won't be in that area, but you remember when they're gonna do Max Meadows?
It's usually in October.
Yeah. October, they'll have one in Max Meadows, so.
Okay. So it's always good to do multiple ones, because, you know, you mail, you knock the doors, you miss people, you know, and so it's always gonna be, you have to keep them separate.
We'll get a list of some of the festivals and activities that go on.
That'd be great.
Do we have a copy of their map, what they're calling Section 21, or whatever the word is?
Vatty 1 and Vatty 2.
Yeah, whatever.
Yes.
Vatty 1 is the Speedway District, Vatty 2, 22, is everything else.
Yeah, and if you look on our website, we do update, there's a place for new construction as we try to update the new areas, you can highlight, you see cabinet, that where land's available. It'll come up on that.
If you'll just send us a link of that, and I'll share that with all the board as well. Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any questions?
No, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our old business is, we have some appointments open, does anybody have anybody, excuse me, or heard any names on the appointments?
County Administrator has historically been the appointee to Crypha, and I would recommend reappointment there.
All right, entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Barr to the Crypha. Somebody have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. The DSS physician, Ms. Patty O'Quinn, I talked to Ms. Ayers, she's not eligible for reappointment, because she's served her two full terms, so we'll be trying to get some names and people interested in that appointment. All right, anything else under old business, Mr. Barr?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
I do, Mr. Chairman, if you saw on your desk, an amend and appropriate request to get the Virginia Outdoors Foundation grant funds into the right place, so that we can start spending some of that money for engineering and surveying.
All right, we've got the amend and appropriate request from Mr. Hankins for the Virginia Outdoors Foundation Grant for $100,000. I assume Ms. Lawson just made a motion?
I will gladly make that motion.
All right, have a motion by Ms. Lawson, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, y'all shouldn't let that go. All right, have a second by Mr. Smith, is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Hankins?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to new business. We covered the Lake Road Resolution, we have the Mount Rogers Community Service Cooperative Agreement. Mr. Barr, I think you said, did you say?
Yeah, Ms. Bryant is here to go over that, the resolution is in the package, and some information about it, and she can give us more details.
And Andy Koeck was here with me, from Koe, he's a partner with us on this, and will be getting some of these dollars for housing. He asked me to give an update, we did have a deadline last week, so we did submit the proposal, and proposal was for $1 million in opioid abatement grant funds, it's a competitive grant. We did. Uh, we did have to have a match and, uh, Mount Rogers Community Services Board did provide two hundred thousand dollar in matching funds to total a million, two hundred thousand dollar proposal. Uh, this proposal will increase, uh, Obot Services where at capacity in all of our, uh, county clinics. Uh, it will pay for another, a prescriber and, uh, other S U services. It will provide, uh, onboarding costs. Uh, we will have a, uh, recovery house for men the first year and a recovery house for women the second year. And then, um, the other half of the dollars will go for apartments, but Andy can talk about it. I'd like to hear him. Our reach is sixty individuals a year, probably, of course, uh, exceed that. And, uh, our timeline is we ask for one year with renewal for up to four additional years to complete this project. We did get, uh, signatures, uh, asked for an update on that. We got signatures from Shawna from Smith County, Cameron Burton from Land, uh, Michael Watson from Carroll County, Gavin Lovins from City of Galax, and Stephen Boyer from Grayson County. Um, I did ask, uh, because we did wait until the very last day to send this in, if we could add with, because we would love this to be, six localities of Mount Rogers. Um, and they did say that I could, uh, put in a formal amendment to our proposal to add, but Kelly could like to be part of this project. We have a significant issue with substitutes across our catchment area. I think we're doing a really good job of that, but housing is a pretty significant issue for, uh, these individuals and they could begin to self-assure and they could stay at places that there's active drug abuse going on and they need a sober living situation. So that's why over half of the one million two hundred is for housing. Any questions?
The, the people that, that you're gonna serve, is it just gonna be people from the, the Mount Rogers, uh, Community Service Board area?
It's only gonna be for those, uh, counties who signed this agreement. That's why we would hope that WIS would sign the agreement also, uh, so that we could serve our citizens. It wouldn't be anybody outside of the catchment.
And?
But it would include Smith, Land, Carroll, City of Galax, and Grayson.
And on the, the housing, where is this housing will be located at?
Uh, well, uh, the, Mount Rogers will do the men's and the women's house, and we're looking for housing across our catchment area. Uh, so we don't know exactly where we'll find an appropriate house. Uh, we, we're looking continuously for, uh, appropriate, uh, place that has community, uh, but also, um, uh, safety. We're looking at safety, community access, job access, those type of things.
When you say.
Find them to work.
When, when you say appropriate, what do you mean?
Well, we don't want them to be in a drug-infested neighborhood. Uh, we don't want them to be isolated in the country where they can't get to appropriate social activities and work. Uh, we want them to be a, they have purpose and to feel good about themselves. And so, uh, we want them to be, you know, in a nice, nice place. Like, we're, uh, for our mental health, uh, you know, we're right here on Main Street fixing up a, a house across from Open Door Cafe. I don't know if you're aware of that, but it's Old Will's House. And we are working very hard to make that something that this community can be proud of, and that will be for those with mental health issues. This will be proposals for substitutes.
So Ms. Bryant, the, the one point two million, is it gonna be split up equally across all six counties or will it be determined on the need for each county?
Um, we serve more Smith than WIS than we serve the other four. So, that would be my guess is the breakdown would be more of the Smith and WIS and less in the Land and Grayson. And then middle is, uh, Carroll and Galax.
And I know you mentioned Mr. Cagley and he's, he's with us tonight. Could you give us a little bit of information on the apartments, the location and what your plans were over there?
It's my understanding that the, uh, the request going to the opioid authority would be four-year repeat renewal. So it would be one point, one million with a match every year for four years as these funds flow. Um, you know, we're gonna be involved. We would like to be building new four-bedroom, four two-bedroom units in scattered sites. We have some land here in Whitfield, we've got some land in Galax, we have some land in Smith County. But you know, I hope some of you all were at or read the proceedings from the housing summit two weeks ago. Every, any next new housing unit in WIS County is gonna help everybody. Studies show there's a shortage of a thousand housing units. We're dealing with that every day. I just reported this morning to the Ministerial Association. Since August, we've had to turn away two hundred ninety-two people who were homeless, who are eligible for financial assistance in a shelter. We've had to turn away since August. Of that two hundred ninety-two, like two hundred and seventy-nine of those were from WIS County. So, they're not transients coming in from someplace else. These are local folks. And so, building four units for this recovery program will be dedicated to them, uh, will be hugely helpful because if she, if Mount Rogers has funds going to do the recovery program, do housing, you know, people are gonna fail. Everything's gonna fail. They're gonna be living like she said back on, you know, in not safe areas. So, um, anything you folks can do to support the next new house in WIS County would be helpful. The people working at Blue Star, we're helping the local population, we're helping the people who are managing these factories and businesses. I would just say, you know, anything you all can do to support this resolution and other efforts that we're gonna be talking about for the next year.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Anybody else?
Just go ahead.
You know, the big question is where? You know, I mean, you are, and people are concerned about these kind of houses going in their neighborhoods. Um, so I mean, that is an issue. Whether we want it to be or not, it is. Um, you know, citizens are concerned about having a halfway house or whatever rehab house in their neighborhood. I mean, it's, that's an important question.
Yeah, that's a good, very good question, and of course, that's true. Um, we're going, and we've had a consultant, Sandy Cunell, in this for Virginia Roads to Recovery, and Roads to Recovery, uh, uh, have put in multiple homes in, in neighborhoods. In those neighborhoods, are very pleased with those neighbors. They help, uh, neighbors there. They work and, and they're helpful, they're part of the neighborhood, and it's not a recovery house that has twenty people in it. You know, there's, you know, four to eight. Uh, you know, uh, no, no more people in that house than a large family. And, uh, they're adults and they're working, they're getting treatment, they're recovering. And in those neighborhoods, you have people that are using, that are struggling and, um, and every neighborhood across this country. And, uh, you have my, um, commitment to keep it a sober living house that is an asset in the neighborhood or community.
I would just add that if you don't have a recovery program and a supportive housing situation, folks are on the street everywhere, living in your neighborhood, your neighborhood, your neighborhood today, that are not being treated, don't have supportive services, and Mr. Paulson will be saving, the town's gonna be saving. So, um, I think it's gonna help the community at large to, um, address the epidemic and just a really good start.
One thing that I would like, Ms. Bryant, I know, uh, Mr. Cook, and I agree with what Mr. Cook said, um, because we've already gotten questions with a halfway house that we found out it's in, uh, the Fort Chisel area, nobody knew about. Um, so, just for me personally, and I, I can speak for the rest of the members on the board, but, uh, if you could give us a heads up on a communication so we could try to get in front of some of the questions from the citizens of, uh, the county, uh, possibly some education about some of these programs and these houses before, before they come in.
I could do the same thing I do, do for Bill Rush, and he asked me to call him and ask about the street with the housing.
That's fine.
Well, well, I think, I think the problem and to Mr. Smith's point is, um, when there's no communication, um, and then we start getting calls from citizens wanting to know why there's a house with thirty-two people living in it.
Well, that's not our house.
Yeah, no, yeah.
No, we're not saying.
But, but that, that's why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, I understand.
And, you know, you, you pointed out, you pointed out that the, the grant period, you know, we, WIS County is the only one that missed the, you know, the deadline to, to sign this. We have meetings twice a month, Ms. Bryant. You could have brought this to us at any time.
Oh, I got it.
So, so, no, it was a very overview of, of what you wanted to do. Well, since then, we've been getting calls about this halfway house with thirty-two people living in it, and I know it's not yours, but that's why our antennas are up.
We're gonna put up a halfway house with thirty-two people in it. That's not gonna work.
So that, from, from my end, that's, that's why we're having this conversation. It's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we, we're out of everybody that you talked about, we're the only one that don't have zoning. So that's another reason that, that our antennas are, are perked up.
I, I recall, Steve, Bill Rush wants me to call and we.
Bill Rush is town manager for Marion.
Marion, yeah.
He, he wants to know ahead of time and he tells me, he has a picture of him.
There's a lot of private sector for-profit projects like this happening, just in substance, not just in substance use, but also in, uh, mental health and, uh, I D P, health disorders, so. And so when you have private sector for-profit people coming in, they're not answerable to her board or to you all.
Yeah, exactly.
And, but it's only, it's gonna pop up wherever. I noticed they were voting for Mount Roger Board a few minutes ago, and, you know, this is an opportunity for you all to have a placement on this board that, uh, would be helpful.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, I'll just add that I agree with what everyone else is saying. It's such a difficult thing because it is a real issue. But you know, that's, that's one of the hardest things about being on this board is you understand it's a real issue, but for the last week, you've been getting calls and emails worried about a house going in their neighborhood, in their neighborhood. So, it makes it tough, you know?
Yeah, I haven't even heard about a thirty-two unit house. I, I would have thought I would have been.
It may possibly be. There's, there's a new project in town called Hope Center Ministries. Anybody aware of that? It's a for-profit, eight-phase recovery house.
That would be, yeah.
They bought a property somewhere in WIS County. I work for Hope. The building's called Hope Ministry Center. This outfit's called Hope Center Ministry. We're getting calls every single day saying, I want to thank somebody for this recovery house and saying, we don't think about it, so.
That, that would be the one where that's, that's speaking opinion, yeah.
And then the hotel as well.
We are Joe Partners, and, and we would not want to do anything that would hurt this town. We only want, can't ask that.
As long as we have, in, in my opinion, as long as we have communication, it changes everything. Because then I can explain it to people who are upset in my area.
All right. Does anybody else have any more questions? Right here and now, entertain a motion to, I guess, do we need to take action on this?
Yes, I'd just request you all recommend approving the agreement and I'll execute it.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the cooperative agreement recommendation.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Any more questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 All right. So approved. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. Moving on to the agenda, the next item is our.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Uh, Ms. Whitehurst is our four-H coordinator there in the front. I asked her to come, and she would love to introduce herself sometime or another in the meeting, if possible.
Come on with it. Unless you want to stay to the end.
Thank you all so much for having me. I got here a little bit late because I kinda got lost between all of the buildings around here. I am Mallory Whitehurst. I am originally from a small town in Florida where I grew up on a agricultural farm with a cow calf operation as well as peanuts and wa- watermelon. I was very involved in four-H as a kid, and that carried me out through college where I pursued a degree in diversified agriculture. And I ended up here in Whitfield, and it was a very nice surprise, and believe it or not, this is a bigger town than my hometown. And it's very nice to have the same small-town community feel, and I am slowly getting to know everyone and everywhere. I spent the past year kind of, um, trying to talk to some teachers and getting back in the school system and such. My goal is to have regular four-H programming in all of the schools and after-school programs as well. I have a couple of summer activities planned in addition to the four-H camp. So, um, I'm looking forward to kind of helping the youth grow and turn into good citizens that won't end up in the halfway house. So, thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Thank you. I've been trying to figure out who she was for the last.
Man told me she was lost, and she came in, and I've been trying to figure out how to get her up here so she wouldn't have to wait to the very end. But she does a fantastic job with all the students, and she was, uh, one of the got me involved with the May Day events, and, uh.
And for reference, my fiance is Walker Stevens, uh, Alfred, uh, Alfred and Diane.
I wasn't gonna bring that up publicly, uh, but.
We, we, I, I thought maybe you just got off the grayhound.
I don't think I was a captain honor.
Everybody else does.
But welcome, and thank you. All right. We have the, uh, comprehensive plan.
I'll, I'll start and just say it's, uh, the, the planning commission has been working on it for a long time. They had their public hearing at their last meeting and have recommended it to the board. Uh, I have emailed you all the link as well. It is posted on our website. Um, we will need to review and we will need to set a public hearing that you all desire time to review and consider adoption of, uh, the planning commission's plan or to, uh, send it back to the planning commission to request any changes that you all might like. So, I'll let Mr. Hankins go from there with any information he wants to share.
I think the only thing I would add to that is the planning commission, uh, Mr. Burton may wanna chime in on this as well. Uh, the planning commission did, uh, express interest in sitting down with the board and having some discussion of, of this plan prior to, uh, your adoption. Uh, they, they'd also like some, some guidance on how you wanna proceed with some of the recommendations. So, uh, it's, uh, it's been two years that we've been working on it. Uh, just as a reminder, this was a grant-funded project, uh, funded through some of the, uh, CARES Act funding. So, uh, we had a consultant who developed most of the plan, uh, but it has been a significant amount of staff time and, uh, planning commission, uh, time as well. As we've, we've gone through, we've, we've literally gone through page by page and, and done the reviews. Uh, I think we've produced a good plan, but there's always room for improvement. So if you see anything that you'd like to. if you see anything that you'd like to, you want me to underchange, we have plenty of opportunity to do that before adoption.
And if you're old school, no offense meant to anyone, and want a paper copy of it, instead of trying to review the whole thing on the computer, let us know, and we'll print out a, a paper copy.
You're getting three pages? It's, I don't remember how many pages it is, but it's.
It's about a hundred and twenty-five.
Oh. What took most pleasure?
I would like to do a, I have a lot of questions, and they'd like to have some feedback from each of one of us, so hopefully we can get this settled down and nailed together quickly. Ms. Chairman, what I'd recommend is, is if you all would like, is scheduling a work session between one of our meetings, so we could, after our May twenty-third meeting, we could look at scheduling between that meeting and, and the June, and whatever the first meeting in June is, somewhere in there, to just get that process started. And I'll ask the county attorney to confirm the timeframe that we, as, as the board, you all had to take action on the plan, I believe it's a hundred and fifty days, if I'm correct, but I'll ask him to confirm that and get in touch with you all in the process.
Sounds good to me, take it with your buddy.
Works for me.
All right, move into our fiscal year 2024 budget.
Um, I have, I've shared with you all by email, I've got in the budget here, um, won't rehash everything that, that's in my, my summary letter, but basically, a hundred and seventeen million dollar budget, twenty-five million dollars less than, than last year's budget. As you all know, one of our challenges this year has been trying to come up with the actual funding numbers from the General Assembly, the best advice that we have received to date so far from VACO, the best information that the school board has received, is that the quote-unquote skinny budget with the amendments as adopted is what's in place right now. We have received the documentation from COIN right now proceeding with the five percent increase for constitutional officers. The school, you may remember Dr. Poole presented three, three budget scenarios to you all, there was a senate, there was a house, and there was a governor's budget, they have gone back and revised, revising all of their budget to the skinny budget as it, as it currently sits. We have to go ahead and look at setting a public hearing, the school's gotta go ahead and look at adopting their budget, they've gotta go ahead and, and look at getting their contracts out in the process. From what I understand, most school systems are looking at proceeding with, and most of them did five percent the year before and have to do five percent this year, most are looking at proceeding with the five percent. If the General Assembly does meet, revise anything, they will be coming back to their counties, asking them to amend the budgets, and then they will be looking at amending contracts or whatever they need to for potential increases, but at this time, there is not additional funding in the state budget for any of those. On the school budget, they requested an addition of one point six million dollars of new local operational funding. This proposed budget does include an increase of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's covering salary increases, it's covering the ten percent, it was nine point nine percent health insurance increase, it's also covering the changes to the health insurance for providing a little more towards the dual and family plans that, that we've talked about in the process. Includes on, on the county side, the fire and rescue budgets that we have talked about, the addition of the, all the, the rescue squad personnel, the human resource position, the maintenance position, and a potential animal shelter attendant, and then our capital improvement projects obviously are less than last year, because last year was obviously filled with a school construction project for Scott Memorial Middle School, and then also a lot of projects with Blue Star, with water, wastewater expansion, that are in process and are still going on currently. What you've got is currently shown as a balanced budget with the tax rates remaining as they are. As I've shared with you all, the Commissioner of Revenue has downloaded values already for personal property this year, from January first last year to January first this year, there has been a drop in those values that should equate approximately the same range as the million dollars that we ended up are doing the rebates on right now. So, I'll be quiet and answer any specific questions you all have. The action the board would need to take is, if we are holding a public hearing on May twenty-third, as per our calendar, would be to recommend advertising the revenue expenditure budget and the tax rates as proposed.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barrett? On the, the, the school board budget, um, with, with what they've worked on with, with dropping their initial request, are they gonna be able to address the capital improvement projects that they talked about?
To my understanding right now, they are still looking at addressing the capital improvement projects, because they are needing to be done.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Barrett?
I don't.
All right, entertain a motion to, do we need to do two separate motions, or?
I don't see why you couldn't do it all in one motion, Mr. Chairman, for all three.
All right, entertain a motion to advertise the revenue and expenditures for the F five twenty-two-four budget, along with the tax rates as presented, which have no increases for a public hearing on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, so have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Terry? Is there any more questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Barrett?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins, you have anything?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to reports, we have a Budget Committee report.
The Budget Committee met on May third, two thousand twenty-three, and recommends the following, amend and appropriate four thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars to account twelve oh nine dash four three zero one seven zero for the J D power invoices for twenty-twenty-three vehicle values.
Right, coming from a committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Amend and appropriate nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to account twelve zero four dash four six one one zero zero for the rebate check postage.
Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Amend and appropriate two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars to account nine zero six zero dash four seven zero five one eight for the Max Meadows sanitary sewer improvement project.
Any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Ms. Chairman, I'll just mention to everyone, this is the, the project that repairs the sanitary sewer lines in, in Max Meadows area, it was, came in higher than anticipated in budget, and we were able to secure additional funds, which we've already had the closing on that for this project, this just amends those additional loan funds that we've got and puts them in the budget.
All right, does that lead to any questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Approval of change order number six for the county office building project.
Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
It's seen in the, the package, that is a seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollar and two cent change order, change order number six. This is, the original building had a small conduit running from the electrical room, which will be the same area where the electrical comes in, running to the, what I'll call the maintenance room for the new building addition. That conduit was not large enough to meet the requirements, I will, as Johnny Kinsler indicated in his memo right here, they worked several times to come up with a plan for relocating these conduits, and Mr. Sayers was able to use his knowledge and information to work with Johnny and the contractor to get them to change what they had proposed as a twenty-thousand dollar change order down to this seventy-three eighty-eight, so appreciate Landon working on that with, with K and A.
All right, any other questions or discussion? And then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Adopting the casino gaming tax proceed usage resolution.
All right, anybody have any questions on that recommendation? Mr. Hankins, you have, excuse me, you have anything to add on that?
Just very quickly, the, the state code requires us to use those funds for public safety, education, or transportation, since education and transportation largely have their own funding streams, and public safety does not, it's staff's recommendation that we proceed with using these for public safety, in line with what you have planned in next year's budget, and it simplifies the accounting greatly, both for the accounting and for the county, and for our auditors.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Progress Park Connector Road right of way, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, the, what you've got there, the, as you're all aware, BDOT has been working on design of the connector road to run from just north of Lot twenty-four, back over to Nye Road. It will require the acquisition of about seven point oh four three acres of With County's Progress Park property. As I indicated to you all, it had shifted a little bit to the north from our original design, which takes a little bit more of our Lot, twenty lot than what was originally anticipated, but this does provide us with a, a much-needed road with better access to the park. I would request that you all authorize staff to proceed with authorizing the conveyance of this, um, right-of-way to BDOT at no cost to the project, as you're all aware, we are funding five million dollars of what was originally a twenty-three to twenty-four million dollar project, it's actually gonna probably be up closer to thirty million now under the inflationary side, but, um, we have always provided all the right-of-way for BDOT and for, within the industrial park. We will continue to try to work with BDOT as they are constructing this, that some of the vacant land remaining south of the road, we think has the potential to potentially be a site for a fire and rescue station, and we will continue to work with BDOT to try to see if they can, can work with their contractor, whoever gets a bid on this, to maybe use that as a storage site, maybe give us the start of a site there for potential fire rescue station or something else. But, that would be in lieu of us having BDOT pay us, which basically, we'd be paying ourselves for one-fifth of it, or one-sixth of it, whatever the amount is, so. So I would just request a motion to authorize staff to proceed with donation of this property, we may have to do required public hearing on the, the donation of land, so, but we'll start all that process, I just need to let BDOT know if we're okay with donating it.
All right. Coming from committee, it was committee, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I got lost for a second. We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Hoary?
Aye.
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 So approved.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, move on to Board Supervisors time, Mr. Burnett? Only thing I have is, I will be on vacation next week, so I'll be missing the building grounds, me, that's it, Chairman. Thank you, sir, Ms. Lawson.
Have nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Cook?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Horni?
I'll pull my stuff up then, I was waiting on Mr. Smith, I figured I had thirty more minutes to find what I didn't talk about.
I don't have a lot of powers here.
Uh, I have a couple things, uh, one thing was, I was asked if we can check into some kind of a way that farmers can get rid of tractor tires, even if it's bar feet, the, what I was told was that Floyd County has some kind of a program where they have a centralized location that farmers or whoever can take them. I mean, to me, it would make sense, I mean, I don't know what it costs, what it would cost B and M to take a tire or whatever, but if there was some way that, I mean, I know there's people, you know, one of our rules is, and I still argue against this, one of our rules is, you can take four tires off of a vehicle, I think my truck has six on it, what am I gonna do with the other two? So, I mean, you know, even if that's an option, I mean, you know, to give an option that they pay for other tires, even with that, since we haven't been doing the tire days, and I don't know, are we planning on doing any tire days anytime soon?
Um, I have to look and see when our last one was, and see what the timeframe it's scheduled, and, and I know they usually try to work with the Farm Bureau with that in the process to try to take a lot of the farm days.
That's part of the reason I brought it up, is it was at a Farm Bureau meeting last night, and they were talking about it.
And, and one thing that, and I'm not intentionally trying to kick this back on you, Mr. Horni, but, um.
Well, I figured it was coming there.
When, when Mr. Bowers was working for us, one of the things that he talked about was that he, he thought it would be advantageous for the J P S A to set up a tire collection bin for a fee.
Right.
Because there is no way to take those tractor tires, people, you know, people don't like paying for it anyway, but at least if they had somewhere to take it, it gives you an option to take it, and then they could charge the fee for it, and then, you know, have it sent to whoever's recycling or whatever, so, um, I'll, I'll share that back with Mr. Bowers as well, and see if that's something the J P S A might be able to, to help with, because the advantage there, J P S A's already set up and taking cash payments and everything like that for coming in, our collection centers and all that are, are not a place to do that, so.
Well, I, I, I personally don't think there, if you did it at a collection center, you'd have to pick one center, I think.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you get a big tractor tire in there, and it's, yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's a pretty good thing to handle, so they're gonna have to have a special truck to pick it up, I mean, just anybody ain't gonna go in there and pick it up and throw it up in a truck.
Okay.
The other thing I was, I was told last night that our school board has voted to do away with ag classes for the eighth grade level, and they were fussing about that, uh, I mean, I agree that in the state of Virginia, we're in the top ten of most ag-related things, so I think the sooner we can get kids interested in ag, the better we can be. I don't know if that's something we need to bring to the school board to talk to them, that's what they were gonna do. The third thing I had was actually a good thing, if any of you didn't go to the truck pull at the Apex this weekend, you missed a well-attended event, there was a lot of people there.
I was wondering what was going on.
I took two, I took my two grandsons, and I think they spent more time and they had more fun playing on the hill and pulling the grass up than they did washing, watching the trucks, but you know. That's all I have, sir.
All right, um, did I skip you, Mr. Smith?
I'm sure it is, I'll wait my turn.
Go ahead.
I just got a couple things, uh, one, Mr. Barrett, I've heard the same issues about the ag department.
Okay.
From my end of the county as well, so, I know you heard it last night, so, I've been hearing that, um, Mr. Barrett, I talked to you earlier about this subdivision question, so, and I know you're working on it, so, I know. Just an update on the refunds, I want to thank Ms. Wheaton for the communication that she's been sending out. Just to update on the refunds, uh, I wanna thank Ms. Williams for the communication that she's been sending out. And then uh, you know, if we can just keep the, the progress going. I know it's, it's looking better, but we need to, to get them done.
Yeah, the um, it is a, you're, you're sending emails coming at you and Ms. Williams is at a training event in Texas right now. There was another one that came through today. I did not know if she's seen it yet to forward to you, but um, and, and, and you're all seeing about two or three hundred batch size and I told her we've asked them to submit to us and sometimes we're getting two of them at a time as batches. But the flow is consistent and our staff, I, it's probably within four hours pretty much getting a batch. They're having them in the envelopes now. So I don't know what letter they're at.
G or H is the latest I've heard.
I, I, I believe they were up to K today. Colleen folded about four hundred checks and assembled those for mailing, so.
I know it's awful lonely down here with the B.
I, I was hoping they were gonna stop them after they did the R. So if you could just let Ms. Williams and her staff know.
Yep, sure will.
They're turning around on my area. That's all I've got, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Terry, you have anything?
Yes, sir, one thing real quick. Uh, I had a citizen reach out to me, he had an issue in the treasurer's office. I'm gonna provide his paperwork for Mr. Bear to review. I went through it, me and his wife pay taxes on time and they got a canceled check that matches the amount of the ticket that was sent by the county. He got a delinquent tax bill, went to the treasurer's office last week. He wound up paying an additional two hundred and seven dollars plus a three percent credit card fee for a bill that was already paid. I've looked at it, I think he's right, but I'm not an expert in the treasurer's department. So I'd like Mr. Bear to look at, his accountant numbers have been blacked out in here. But he's got copies of everything provided, which supports where he's at. So I think our citizens deserve a little bit better when they go to the treasurer's office instead of paying something twice and are being argued with, that they actually owe it, when it truly doesn't look like they do owe it based on all the documentation provided.
Yeah, I just.
You got it, sir?
I hate to burden Mr. Bear.
You're good.
I spoke to the same citizen as, as well as Mr. Perry did. Uh, and he, he is already, his accountant has already went through all the information that's in that packet.
Yes, and there's a receipt from the accountant.
Been validated and it's.
Yes.
The citizen looks in the right unless you can find something that we have.
I'm not the treasurer, I'll, I'll be glad to look at it, I'll see what I can understand. I'll look at it and see what I can find out.
But that's uh, that was, that was a, that was a pretty rough conversation to have to listen to.
Yes, it was, it was.
I have you.
Understood.
And that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Terry. Uh, just a couple of things, um, it is teacher appreciation week, um, talking about school board budget. Um, we certainly um, appreciate our, our educators here in With County and uh, happy to announce and, and Mr. Cook and Mr. Bear and, and Mr. Hankins. Um, Amy Malosky got With County Teacher of the Year, the GO Tech teacher, Retreat Middle Schools. Um, it's a great honor. Um, apparently the county should be getting some kickback from the GO Tech program because other counties are coming up here to see how she runs the program, which I think so. I look forward to seeing it go to Fort Chisel next year and then to Scott, um, when they get that, that building finished. Um, but uh, certainly well deserved and, and anybody that's went to see that, that program, it's pretty impressive. So Washington County and I know Smith County has come up here to, to uh, see how we're doing things and that's uh, nice to be recognized. Um, besides that, just the road things, um, appreciate everybody coming out and I'm glad we were able to get those roads added and that's all I've got. Anybody else have anything?
Yes, May twenty-third will be our next meeting and graduation is.
Twenty-fourth, twenty, or twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh. Yes, sir.
So, um, J, J I D A golf tournament next Thursday. You'll see, see excellent athletic ability and then the cliff kicker that Friday, I'll get my two days of golf out in one week. Um, anybody that's traveling around Lever or Old State Road.
Watch out.
For a warrant. I got Farm Bureau insurance, call Jet. Mr. Farthing, you have anything?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Hankins, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Ms. Collin? All right, we'll be adjourned.